Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Wednesday, November the 16th, Board of County Commissioners meeting. And this is the very first meeting in this brand-new facility. So I want to welcome each and every one of you that are joining us today online. And especially, we've got a pretty full audience today. I don't know if all these people would fit in our old boardroom. But thank you for being here. This is kind of a historic occasion. We are, may end up with some glitches. We don't know yet, but if our staff did everything that they told me they did, I don't see any problem whatsoever. We are a little bit more cramped, but again, we don't want to make this too comfortable for the commissioners, because in two years, our money that pays for this facility runs out, and we do need a new building. So I want to, again, welcome you. There are several different things that are happening today. But first of all, I want to recognize our clerk. You all have heard me say Madam Clerk a jillion times during our meetings, but today is Cheyenne Lewis's last meeting with us. And so, instead of saying Madam Clerk at this time, I want to say thank you to Cheyenne Lewis. She is going to work elsewhere, but we're going to miss her, and I want to thank her very much for her service. This morning, we, some of our commissioners do have some events, so we're going to have to have a hard stop at 11:30 today, so we're going to try and move through the agenda. So with that, you're going to see the order is a little bit different than it's been in the past, because some of the things that we used to have at the beginning of the meeting, before I'd call it to order, don't end up as part of the official business. So you're going to see that today, we don't have that introduction at the beginning. That's why I'm starting it for the very first time, but we will have it here momentarily as part of the meeting. So with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, November 16, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by Stephen Luna Zayk Turk. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Good morning, everyone. Let's pray. Dear Lord, we come to you this morning as individuals who are reliant and dependent upon your wisdom and grace. I pray this morning that we would all be reminded that our worth is not found in our titles, our positions, our accolades, or even achievements. Rather, our worth is found in you. In the same way you spoke over your son, Jesus, before he started his public ministry, his preaching, his teaching, his healing, as you said, "This is my Son, whom I love; with him I am well pleased." Would you help us understand this morning that your pleasure in us stems not from what we can achieve or do, but primarily from a heart and life that says, "Use me, God; I'm yours"? I pray that all of us here for the first time or once again would humbly and honestly say, "Use us. Use this committee." We're not mere accidents. We were created by an eternal God who loves us and cares for us and has good things in store for us. The members of this council do not only find themselves here because of a political system, rather by your infinite wisdom. They were selected and appointed, and I pray this morning that you would encourage and inspire this council. I pray that our number-one goal would be to continue to serve the people you have called us to serve. As Proverbs 69 says, "A person makes their plans, but the Lord establishes their steps." Would you honor these servants today as they aim to bless you with their plans? I pray for peaceful discussion. I pray for reconciliation in the areas that require it. I pray for unity. I pray for cohesion. I pray for progress. I pray for humility and respect to abound in this room. And I pray above all for love to increase. And lastly, Lord, I pray that our county would be known for its unity and good work, and may we be recognized throughout our state, our nation, and our world for the good we accomplish and aspire to do. Be with all of our governing officials, our nation, our state, our county, our cities, and with everyone who aspires to do good in this land. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Pastor. I appreciate it. Commissioner Howell, did you have something before we go on? Oh, okay. It's new, so we're just trying to figure out our lights. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs, Community Relations Specialist. I would like to invite Kathleen Fabrizas, the President of Kansas Emergency Management Association, to the podium. She is here to present two of their annual conference awards to two of our great employees.
Good morning. Every year, we have our annual KIMA conference, and this year it was in Mulvane. And every year, all of the peers in emergency management nominate their peers for different awards. And this year, two of the awards were from Sedgwick County. I'd like to also introduce to you, we have two members of the board beside myself, John Stradall. He's the president-elect and will take over next year, and Carrie Corthals from Butler County, and she is our Secretary of Treasury. The first award is for outstanding service, and it recognizes individuals or groups outside of the association who put forth significant effort during a period of time. That is the Randy Rinniker Instructor of the Year Award, I'm sorry, and it's presented to an individual or team who performed exemplary service to emergency management. And this year, Cody Sharvet was our winner of that award. Cody, during the 2021-22, because of COVID, of course, we have to take into consideration a lot of things. He had weather storm safety classes, including a homemade tornado machine, the EOC open practice trainings for key stakeholders, disaster preparation training for several businesses, coordinated and sponsored event venue and special event trainings, coordinated site survey and storm safety trainings for businesses, churches, presented regional mitigation plan education to cities of Bentley, Bel Air, Andale, and city councils, onsite severe weather safety training for bus drivers and appraiser's office, instructed emergency procedures and storm safety to Wichita State, coordinated and co-instructed the first-ever Business Preparedness Workshop to small businesses, co-facilitated public advanced storm spotter class, coordinated and sponsored above-and-below-the-line hazmat classes for local firefighters and hazmat teams. On behalf of KIMA and Sedgwick County, I'm very proud to present this award to Cody. Our second award is the Colonel Malin G. Weed New Emergency Manager Professional of the Year Award, and that's for an emergency manager that's only been in that position for 24 months. Jonathan Marr is this year's award winner. He joined Sedgwick County Emergency Management in October of 2020. He has taken the initiative to challenge the status quo and made many process improvements in our, in your department. It started with learning everything he could about all of the outdoor warning devices, and there's 152 of those devices. Jonathan was born and raised in Connecticut, and he knew nothing about outdoor warning devices. Jonathan leads both the radio amateur civil emergency services and the K-9 search and rescue volunteer teams. Jonathan attended the first National Community Emergency Response Team Association Conference and the Train the Trainer Conference, so he could establish a county-wide neighbors-helping neighbors program. Jonathan incorporated a new software solution to track volunteer hours, saving hundreds of hours of manual data entry. Despite having no direct emergency management experience, Jonathan quickly demonstrated his aptitude to learn and natural talent to build trust and relationship with key stakeholders. And you, as well as I, can see why he was deserving of this award. On behalf of KIMA and Sedgwick County, I congratulate Jonathan.
Well, first of all, on behalf of the commission, congratulations to Cody and Jonathan. Do either one of you wish to say anything?
Just very quickly, I want to express our appreciation to someone who isn't here today who nominated both of us, our boss Julie Stimson, who's at the Conference for the International Association of Emergency Managers down in Savannah, Georgia. She wasn't able to attend, but we're both very appreciative of that. I want to thank Kathleen and the other board members for being here to show their support as well.
Thank you.
I guess I have a couple of things as well. Cody is very deserving of Instructor of the Year, and if you've never had an opportunity to take one of Cody's classes, I think the amount of meticulous effort and passion that he exudes when he teaches is something I've tried to emulate since I've been here, but it's an absolutely enjoyable experience to be part of one of Cody's classes. So I'm very delighted to see that he was awarded this by KIMA this year. And if any of us are successful in our departments, it's because Julie gives us a long leash to explore and deliver on our talents, and we wish she was here today, and we know she's watching, so hi, Julie.
Very good. Thank you. On behalf of the commission, congratulations to each and every one of you. I think they're going to take some pictures though now. You'll come around.
You're going to need a new shelf.
We can do that.
We're not going to get our steps set.
Now you don't have to walk along.
Right.
All right, three, two, one. All right, thank you, guys.
Again, congratulations. And as Commissioner Cruz pointed out, last week, we would have got all of our steps in, because we came down off the podium five times, so today, we just stand up. Back to you, Nicole.
Thank you, Kathleen, and congratulations again, John and Cody. Next, we will have County Manager Tom Stoltz come up and talk about the GF-O-A Award.
Sir?
Good morning, Tom.
Thanks, Nicole. Good morning, Commission. I just want to take a minute to talk about a little bit more good organizational news. The Government Finance Officers Association, which you here, Lauren and Lindsay, call GF-O-A by its acronym, is a professional association of over 22,000 state, provincial, and local government finance officers in the United States and Canada. Its mission is to advance excellence in public finance. What is termed the Triple Crown Award recognizes governments that have received all three GF-O-A Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Awards, and it includes three things: the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Award, the Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award, and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This year's Triple Crown Award honors documents prepared for fiscal 2020, and I don't have to remind you what happened that year to make it extra challenging. Sedgwick County is one of just 317 governments that received the Triple Crown Award, and to put that into perspective, and a fun fact for today, according to Governing Magazine, there are over almost 39,000 general-purpose governments in the United States, along with another 51,000 special districts. So I think this puts us in rare air as far as a fairly prestigious financial award. And there's three groups I'd like to thank for this. Number one, I think this bodes well for our county commission, our board, who every year works meticulously from April all the way to August to adopt a responsible and fiscal well-managed budget. So I think it bodes well on our commission. I think it speaks highly of our leadership and department head team, who helped to set that budget and develop it, and then they have to live by it in the year after, when we work through the year. They have to stay within budget and be responsible. And finally, I think it bodes well for our financial team, many of who are here, Lindsay and her department heads, who are the behind-the-scenes people that work with accountable fiscal practices and policies which enable us to get this type of recognition. So I'd just like to thank them also. So thank you, Commissioners, for letting me take a minute, and I know Lindsay's here. If you have any questions about all of these acronyms, she'll be glad to answer that. So thank you for the time.
Award is well-deserved, and thank you. Appreciate it. I appreciate all of your staff and everyone that's involved. All right, Nicole?
Yes. Lastly, but not least, we wanted to remind everyone that Sedgwick County offices will be closed Thursday, November 24 and 25, Friday, November 25, in observance of Thanksgiving. Emergency services are still available by calling or texting 911. I will stand for any questions if you have any.
Thank you. I don't see any. Also, I always want to make sure that I take time to recognize people that have served in public offices in the past. We have Tim Norton in the office in the audience today. We have Melody McCray Miller. We have Dalton Glasscock. Hopefully, I haven't missed anyone that has served our community, but I want to thank each and every one of them for being here today. Okay. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we received two comments via email last night. Move to receive and file. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we also have two individuals signed up to speak on public agenda. The first one is my friend Larry Burks, retired Lieutenant Colonel, by the way.
Good morning, Alden. Thank you, Colonel.
You'll have five minutes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I won't take up that entire time. Again, my name is Larry Burks. I'm the president for the Wichita branch of the NAACP. I came to have question and comment on the, one of the pending agenda items we have here about the Sedgwick County 2023 holidays. I know a couple of months ago, we had a chance to meet. I understand there was going to have to be some discussion on the ability financially of the county to be able to recognize this as one of the official holidays. I understand there's been some deliberation. I'm not sure what the entire outcome of that is, and I'd like to reserve my questions, if I may, during a time when you have a chance to discuss this on the agenda, because the things that I may want to share will have a direct relationship with what you present. So with that being said, I just want to close in saying that I support, NAACP supports us being able, the county being able to recognize this as a holiday for its employees, to give them the option to do so, and that is my interest and my concern for being here today. And I'd like to, again, yield my time, offer questions later on when that agenda item is presented.
Okay. Thank you. And we also have Melody McCray Miller signed up to speak on public agenda today. She's also going to have an opportunity here in a moment during proclamations, but you're welcome to speak now. And you'll have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to all the Commissioners and everyone else that is here within the commission hearing room. I am going to be very succinct, and I think I will just follow in suit with what Mr. Burks has stated. This is in regards to the item that's referencing the June 19 holiday. It is a national holiday, and so I think that it only should follow in suit that it is a state, and really, we're looking at the county calendar, but that it would be a county holiday. So just as Mr. Burks has stated, as this comes up for discussion, if there are any questions, I would, I would reserve and ask the right to speak again.
Okay. Thank you. And that's all the individuals we had signed up on the public agenda. Madam Clerk, move that we receive and file. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of October 12, 2022.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to read a proclamation. Oh, minutes, I'm sorry.
We're really excited. Motion to approve items A and B.
Oh, I'll second that. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Now, next item.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring Small Business Saturday.
Very good. Now, I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas Sedgwick County celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7 of the firms with paid employees. They are responsible for 62% of the net new jobs created since 1995, and employed 46.8% of the employees in private sector in the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday. 70% report that day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently-owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas, 58% of the shoppers reported that they shopped online with small businesses, and 54% report that they dined or ordered takeout from small restaurants, bars, or cafes on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas, Sedgwick County supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday, and urge residents of our communities and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Commissioners, you've all heard the proclamation. Move to approve. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring Billy Q. McCray Day.
And I have asked Commissioner Cruz to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas, Mr. Billy Q. McCray was born October 29, 1927, near Gary, Oklahoma. He attended both Langston University and the University of Colorado before joining the Air Force, where he learned photography, which led the way to him in becoming one of the first African-Americans to join the Boeing Airplane Company's photography team in 1951. And whereas, after becoming involved with the local NAACP, McCray was strongly encouraged to run for elected office and work to eradicate injustices by changing laws. And whereas, McCray served six years in the Kansas House of Representatives and then served 12 years in the Kansas Senate. And whereas, during his time in the state legislature, he led the successful fight for Kansas Fair Housing Law, passed legislation such as Good Samaritan Food Act, and was successful in launching the Kansas Senior Citizen Employment Act. And whereas, McCray became the Director of the Division of Minority Business in the Kansas Department of Economic Development, founded the neighborhood newspaper, Community Voice, and founded McCray and Associates, a consulting firm that helped entrepreneurs land government contracts. And whereas, McCray became the first African-American to serve as Sedgwick County Commissioner in 1988, serving the best district, District Four. Prior to serving as Commissioner, McCray led the efforts to increase the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners from three to five, thus improving representation. He also led the effort to consolidate all Kansas state offices in Wichita to downtown, making services more accessible for residents. And whereas, McCray met the love of his life, Yvette Williams, in Wichita. The two were married in 1953 and had four children, two boys and two girls. The marriage lasted 42 years until the untimely death of Yvette. I hope I'm saying that right. Is that correct?
Why-Vet.
Excuse me. Excuse me. In 1995, McCray died June 2, 2012. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, Lacy Cruz, on behalf of Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 16, 2022, as Billy Q. McCray Day. And here to accept, well, I will make a motion that we pass this proclamation.
I'll second that. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And here to accept, Melody McCray Miller.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Thank you so much. I am actually going to ask for the committee to come up. It's the naming, it's the Billy McCray Naming Committee to actually come up, those that are here. And I am, I am going to, if you will allow me some privilege, Mr. Chair, I am actually, I am grateful and honored to accept this, representing the McCray family. However, I am actually going to ask for the, what I would call the leader on this proclamation, as well as this committee and the actions that have happened, I'm going to ask Mr. James Barfield to accept this on behalf of the committee.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Commissioners. And I just want to say that on behalf of this renaming committee, I am deeply honored to receive this award on behalf of Mr. Billy Q. McCray. Now, what I'm going to do, I'm going to make one little change. I am going to receive this award, but then I'm going to pass it on to Melody to accept it and place it in. Now, I just want to say one thing real quickly. Billy McCray came from very humble beginnings in a small city in Oklahoma. He was fortunate enough that after college, he entered military service, and he was served here and was discharged here in Wichita from the McConnell Air Force Base. And upon his discharge, he decided that he would make Wichita his home, and he wanted to raise a family and do what he thought he could do best for the people in the state of Kansas. So he served for over three decades in the political arena, but he would be the last one to call himself a politician. Billy McCray was a committed, dedicated, public servant, and as such, he was one of the most successful public servants that this city has seen in my lifetime. He had many contributions and accomplishments, and throughout his career, Billy made friends with and met a lot of people in the city of Wichita, the county of Sedgwick, as well as the state of Kansas. Those people came from all stripes, all colors, all genders, and everybody that knew him loved him. Now, I've often wondered what the Q in Billy Q. McCray stood for, and lately, I've come to the conclusion that you know, I've seen a lot of corporations and companies use different variations of the Q to promote their companies and their businesses, and the Q was for quality. And that applies to Billy McCray as well. For Billy, everything he did was classy and quality. And there's several other people that are here in the attendance that knew Billy on a personal level and a business level, and nobody that I ever seen had anything bad to say about Billy. In his over three decades of public service, there was never one hint or a scent of scandal, of quarrel, of disagreement. Billy was one of a kind. So again, I say that I am deeply honored, but now I want to pass this on for Melody, who's followed in her father's footsteps, to accept this and put it in the proper place for generations to come.
Thank you. Thank you. There are a few other people that I would like to thank, those that are here with us today. We have, of course, former Commissioner Tim Norton. Dalton, what is your last name?
Glasscock.
Glasscock. I ought to know, because actually, I think someone in your family served with Dad in the legislature, was it?
Not related.
Okay. But a glasscock. And, and we have Trevor?
Trev.
Trev. Too cool. And we also have, of course, you see Mr. Barfield, but there are three other members that are not here with us today. I want to thank the city of Wichita, too. I have to take a moment, because it was the city of Wichita that decided that it would be great to be able to name a committee that would name a structure, a place, a location after Dad. And, and he deserves that honor, because he has been prolific in his, his career, and yes, definitely, an honored and yes, definitely, an honored public servant. So we thank you, Sedgwick County, and that is, goes for the Chair and for the rest of the county. Thank you, Lacy Cruz, for reading it with such fervor. I loved it. And thank you to everyone that's here and everyone that's in the audience. The committee has just began, so you'll be, you'll be hearing from us. You will actually be able to watch the work that we do. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the honor.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you just show them what it's like when we did that other project, that'd be great.
Well, it's the first day.
We talked about this yesterday. Where's Tim?
He's done with pictures.
All right, you guys ready?
Thank you. Hey, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, Proclamation declaring National Adoption Month.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Meitzner to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very proud to read this proclamation for National Adoption Month, especially since both Suzie and I, both our children are adopted and run into good young adults and productive members of society with that. Whereas, Sedgwick County believes, along with the nation, that foster children deserve safe, permanent, and loving families through adoption if they cannot safely return home. And whereas, the number of children in foster care has been increasing, and many of those children who are adopted have a better chance in life. And whereas, brothers and sisters who are separated in the foster care system yearn to be adopted by the same family. And whereas, St. Francis Ministries helps families adopt one hundred and eighty-five foster children each year. And whereas, the St. Francis Ministries will be acknowledging November as National Adoption Month, and on Sunday, November nineteenth, St. Francis Ministry adoption staff will caravan to drop off presents to celebrate the adoption of thirty-five foster children by twenty families in November. And whereas, there are fifty foster youth without an adoptive resource waiting to be adopted. Therefore, be it resolved that Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November twenty-twenty-two as National Adoption Month in Sedgwick County, in hopes that the people of this county will open their homes and adopt children from the foster care system. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And here to accept is Shannon Wilson from St. Francis Ministries. Shannon? Good morning, welcome.
Hello. Hi. My name is Shannon Wilson. I'm one of the adoption supervisors at St. Francis. Our numbers are continuously increasing, unfortunately, and National Adoption Day, we also celebrate National Adoption Month in November. So we celebrate a lot of adoptions here in the state of Kansas. The biggest need for adoption is mainly twelve years and older. We know the babies are cute, but so are the older ones. If you would like to learn more about National Adoption Day and National Adoption Month, or really just about foster care in general, you can go to our website or our social media. And I just really thank you guys for taking your time and accepting this proclamation on behalf of St. Francis Ministries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item F, accept the removal of Whitney Crager from the Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, County Counselor. If it pleased the Chair, we can take Items F and G together. These both involve the removal of a couple of appointments to county boards. First is the removal of Whitney Crager from the First District Citizens Advisory Board, Commissioner Meitzner. And G is removal of Christina Neal from the Sedgwick County Solid Waste Committee position. Ask that you approve the removal of these two individuals from these boards.
Thank you. Move to accept the removal of items, individuals listed in Item Foxtrot and Golf. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item H, accept the resignation of Kim Moore from the Sedgwick County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is one of Commissioner Howell's appointments to this board. Please accept the resignation of Mr. Moore from this board, or the backup's request for resignation.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, it's a wonderful lady in my district. She's a very passionate advocate for people in the disabilities populations. I wanted to just say thank you to her service. She's been on this board for quite a long time, and she's a very passionate servant of the, of this board. So I want to say thank you to her especially. But, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion we accept the resignation of Kim Moore.
I'll second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item I, accept the resignation of Deb Groover from the District Four Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is another item. We can take Items I and J together. They are two resignations from the District Four Citizens Advisory Board. First resignation is the request of Deb Groover. Second resignation is Jamie Buster. Ask that you approve the resignations.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Deb Groover, she has served on our board and made wonderful contributions, but she has taken a job out of town, and so she will need to resign. And also, Jamie Buster is the clerk for the city of Wichita, so her duties have increased, and so she will need to resign as well. So I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Deb Groover and Jamie Buster.
Second. I don't see any comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item K, Resolution Appointing Jerry Myers to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Mr. Papoun.
Mr. Chairman, it's just a minute ago, we accepted the resignation of one of Commissioner Howell's appointments to this board. This is a resolution appointing Jerry Myers to this board. Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities works and advocates for seniors with physical disabilities. It's a fifteen-member board. Each of the commissioners have three appointments each. This is one of Commissioner Howell's appointments. Resolution's in proper form. Ask that you approve the resolution.
Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is actually, it's a great pleasure of mine to reappoint Jerry Myers. She took, she was off this board for a short time, but she's willing to go back on the board at my, at my request. So thank you for serving Jerry. And she is a former director of a senior center. She's no longer doing that. She's just a citizen today. So we want to, but she has a lot of expertise and a lot of, a lot of knowledge in this area. So I love having you on, on this board. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion that we would appoint Jerry Myers to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
I'll second that. I don't see any discussion. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And she is in the audience, and we have our county clerk, Kelly Arnold, to swear in.
Good morning, Commissioners. Give us a second to figure out where we're going to stand here in the new room, but yeah, that, that works right there. Okay? Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. So help me God. Congratulations, if you'd like to state anything. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Howell for reappointing me. I enjoyed working on that committee. Lots of fun, lots of interesting things to learn. And then I had a little problem with my health, but I'm back now and ready to go to work. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for serving. We appreciate it very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item L, Resolution Appointing Stephen Burt to the Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board.
Mr. Papoun.
Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution appointing Stephen Burt to Commissioner Meitzner's Citizens Advisory Board. The resolution's in proper form. Ask that you adopt the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm honored to, to make this motion to approve Stephen Burt. I've just recently met him, and knowing his background and his willingness to contribute to our Citizens Advisory Board in a, from a very unique perspective, and he brings a great background to our, to our board and a broad, broadens our reach. And so, Stephen, I'm very honored to make a motion to have you on our Citizens Advisory Board.
Thank you. I'll second that. I don't see any comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we also have Kelly Arnold here to swear him in.
All right. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board. So help me God.
I do.
Congratulations. If you'd like to state anything, you can.
Thank you, Commissioner Meitzner, for this opportunity to serve. I look forward to bringing my vast experience to, to Sedgwick County and see what kind of needles we can move. Thank you.
I expect big things, of course.
Thank you. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business. Item M, Resolution Amending Composition of the Citizens Advisory Board for the First County Commission District of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Catherine, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Catherine Rodriguez, Assistant County Counselor. I'm here today for a resolution that will modify the Citizens Advisory Board for District One, as requested by Commissioner Meitzner. This resolution will modify the membership composition to include a maximum of twelve members instead of eleven, and one of those membership positions will include a high school student. And the recommended action is to approve this resolution.
Very good. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Catherine, for your help on this. So just, I think some of the boards today have a high school representative on their, on their various boards, and so that, I'm just adding that position. So I appreciate the support to do that, make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Well, I think it's a great thing to do, so I'll second. I don't see any comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And is the student here?
No.
That's the next item.
Next item.
Very good. Next item, please, please, Madam Clerk.
Item N, Resolution Appointing Natalie Fawn to the Sedgwick County First District Citizens Advisory Board Youth Position.
Mr. Papoun.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, now with the newly amended board of Commissioner Meitzner, with that allows for a high school student to be a part of the board, we prepared a resolution appointing Natalie Fawn to this board. Resolution's in proper form. Ask that you approve the resolution.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I need to, Natalie could not make it this morning, and she's really inspired by this position, and so I'd like to make a motion that we delay this appointment until the next commission meeting. So my motion is to delay the appointment.
I'll second the motion. Don't see any comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item O, A Resolution Authorizing the Offering for Sale of General Obligation Bonds Series A 2022 of Sedgwick County, Kansas.
Morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Povis, oh, you're CFO. Before we start, Cheyenne, I will miss you. Thank you for taking good care of us. So we are here to talk about a bond sale. So Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell, our bond counsel, will go through the details with you. I'm just here to intro him and advise that these are projects that have already been authorized and completed. Now we're going through the steps of simply financing them. So with that, shortest time ever at the podium for me, I will turn it over to Garth.
Morning, Garth. Watch your head.
Yeah. Appreciate you having the warning tape on the back of that. Good morning, Commissioners. Garth Herman with Gilmore &amp; Bell, the county's bond counsel. As Lindsay mentioned, I'm before you today for a resolution that will authorize the sale of general obligation bonds at the county in order to provide financing for six projects that the county has previously authorized and completed. Those six projects include two special assessment projects for Sharice Woods Edition Phase One Streets and Osage Country Edition Phase One Streets, as well as four bridge projects throughout the county. Adoption of the resolution will authorize the sale of approximately $2,680,000 in bonds to be repaid over a twenty-year period. The sale is scheduled to occur on the afternoon of Tuesday, December the sixth, with the formal award happening at the county commission meeting the following morning on December the seventh. The closing of the bond issue is scheduled for December twenty-ninth of 2022. So that will be the date that the bonds will formally be turned over to the winning bidder, and in exchange, they will deposit the purchase price of those bonds in the county's bank account. With that being said, I'll stand for any questions, and if there are none, I would request a motion to approve the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for Garth or Lindsay? Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My only question is, every once in a while, when interest rates do drop, we take the opportunity to refund, in other words, refinance some of our debt. Is this, is it written in the legalese that we're allowed to do this in this case?
These bonds will be subject to redemption. So generally speaking, a, a twenty-year bond issue will be callable at about year ten and thereafter. These specific bonds, starting on August first of 2032, will be the first opportunity for them to be callable. So generally speaking, the first ten years, the purchaser of the bonds is, is protected from having those bonds, you know, refunded or refinanced early. But after that period, then at any time that the interest rate market is, is a good opportunity for the county to refund these bonds, it'll lower interest costs, that will be available.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments, so I make a motion that we adopt the resolution. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Thank you very much.
Item P, Discussion of Sedgwick County 2023 Holidays.
Morning, Sheena.
Watch your head. Sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheena Schmuts, Chief Human Resources Officer. Today's item is a discussion of the proposed 2023 county paid holidays. We are considering ten paid holidays and the discussion of adding an eleventh holiday of Juneteenth. The standard paid holidays are New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Junior Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and the day after, and Christmas Day. We ask that you consider these paid holidays for 2023 and discuss any additions or alterations to the schedule.
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions for Sheena? Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Will you be displaying the survey results?
I was not planning on discussing those.
Can we display those?
Yes, if you'd like.
Yeah. Like on, like on the screen?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I don't have a visual today. I could, I could verbalize them if you would like.
Is there a way to make that happen?
We can.
Make these public?
We can.
Okay.
Would you like me to discuss them?
Yeah, can you?
Sure. We surveyed all of the Sedgwick County employees and asked two questions of those employees. The first one, do you support recognizing Juneteenth as a paid holiday? We had approximately 1,379 respondents. Eighty-two point nine-six percent responded yes, that they would like to support recognizing that as a paid holiday. 82.96% responded yes, that they would like to support recognizing that as a paid holiday. And then the second question was, if we had to substitute, if budget did not allow, would there be a substitution of a holiday? And approximately 57.72% responded that they would, none, they would not substitute a holiday, followed by 18.71% saying President's Day. 11.82% responded to Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and 3.92% the day after Thanksgiving. And the other responses were less than 3%.
And then the peer study?
Of our surrounding organizations?
Uh-huh.
Give me one second. The peer study indicated that Cedric County currently recognizes 10 paid holidays. The city of Wichita recognizes 12 holidays, including Juneteenth. Johnson County recognizes 10 paid holidays, including Juneteenth, and not President's Day, but they also give three floating holidays for a total of 13. The state of Kansas gives 10 paid holidays and does not include Juneteenth or President's Day. Instead, they give one discretionary holiday in a paid status. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Sheena? I don't see any this time. Mr. Burks, did you have comments?
Yes.
Thank you. You have five minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. And again, Sheena, thank you for that information as well. One of my questions was basically, was there a cost analysis done on how much it would cost the county to add an additional paid holiday, given the budget?
Sheena, would you like to answer that?
Yes, Lindsay was able to provide some numbers. The actual cost of adding a holiday was $168,969.
Say the number again.
$168,969 for actual work on that holiday.
But that's only actual work. What's the total cost, including lost work time?
The total cost would be $828,539. That's the cost we would pay everyone for that day.
Thank you.
Okay, and also, with that being said, has the commission looked at, given the cost analysis on that, is the commission, does the county have sufficient funding to sponsor something like that? Has that discussion been made or had?
Lindsay, can you tell us how much that we're in deficit for 2024?
Hello, again, Commissioners. For the record, Lindsay Poverso, CFO. So, we have looked at the forecast for, and updated it. We have not yet presented it formally to you, but that number that you had seen that was $10 million in 2024 is now $9 million. So, still a substantial deficit in the county's property tax-supported funds.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr. Burks?
It does, but I thought another for me. Okay, again, with that being said, is the commission going to have an opportunity sometime to discuss this and vote one way or other to support this, this holiday?
The commission has the opportunity to, actually, we have several options. One, we can keep the status quo, what we have today. Two is we can add Juneteenth as a holiday, but we have expense with that. And third, we can substitute Juneteenth for President's Day as an option.
So, is that going to be done in an open session, or is it going to be at a closed session with your?
It would be in an open session. It would be today.
It'll be today? Okay, with that being said, then, again, my recommendation, again, based on information and concerns we've gotten from the community, from the NAACP, given the fact that this is a national holiday, one that should be, we feel should be recognized because of the significance of this, and given what has been shared already about peer studies with other, like the Cantona with the city and some other agencies, that they are recognizing that as one of their packages of holidays. We would like to recommend very strongly that the county adopt this as one of the additional holidays and include that as a paid holiday for our county employees and not have that one that can be substituted for another. So, I guess so, instead of having 10, we recommend that you would allow this to be the 11th paid holiday supported by the county. So, that's our position as the NAACP, and we would like for you all to take very strong consideration of that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just, you mentioned three options. I think there's a fourth, and that is to have a floater. It's been discussed as well. But I'd like to ask, I guess, Sheena or Tom, your comments on the difficulty of having a floater holiday. I know you know more, a lot more about this than I do, so please explain how difficult that might be.
Our system is not set up at this time to allow for that. We preload our holidays in, and I think it would take some time to get adjustments made.
Has anybody done any estimating to find out how difficult it would be to implement that?
No, we have not.
So, we don't have all the information we need then to make that option. But it is an option. I mean, we should talk about this because, again, based on the employee survey, some of them value different days, it sounds like. And I would just say that, you know, I think as a guardian of the precious property tax dollars of this county, giving that option as a floater is a very appealing idea to me. Adding a holiday is difficult. But substituting a holiday or adding a floater option is many times, I guess in many ways, is more agreeable to me. But if we don't have the resources to do that, I guess we need to find out what would it take to get to that. So, we actually can consider that as a way to mitigate this idea. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Miller, you asked to speak again? And you'll have five minutes? Thank you. Thanks for bearing with us this morning.
Oh, absolutely no problem. So, budgets are all about priorities. I do understand that the county tax base and the county tax dollars are precious and do change. But budgets are all about priorities and prioritization. So, dollars are there. It's just, the question is, what do you choose to use it on? And I know that there will be additional discussion from the bench that will address this issue. So, it will be interesting to hear the prioritizations and the priorities of the county commission. I am still, as an individual, support of adding, I do agree, of adding an additional holiday. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you again for being here. Commissioners, any other comments? Commissioner Howell.
Just one more thing. Since we're talking about, you know, asking employees what they want, you know, if we were going to commit $828,000 to employees, and you ask them, would you like another holiday, or would you like an enhancement in your salary? We didn't ask that question. I think we're still lacking information. I wish we had all the information we needed. But we don't have, we did not survey our employees on that question, but I wish we would have. And again, with the resources about the floating holiday being something we don't, we don't know what the cost would be to set that up that way. A lot of, you mentioned, other companies, other government agencies have, in fact, set up a floater holiday idea. So, I'm certainly willing to sit back and listen to the conversation here, but I don't think we have all the information we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Burks and Melody, for being here today. I also want to recognize Lilwanda DeShazer. She wanted to speak, but has been informed that she won't be able to. And I did ask if you were able to. I think that when we had this discussion back in October, I was informed that we did not talk about holidays until November. And so, just as a point of clarification, this is November, and out of 2 out of 22 years, we've discussed holidays in November. So, that means that the other 20 years, we have discussed these in October and previous before. So, that's one point of clarification that I just want to make you all aware of. The second thing is, if we're going to accept DEI awards and parade ourselves as an organization that values diversity, equity, and inclusion, but can't put together a holiday that recognizes it in a way that is meaningful, I just want to read this comment that was shared by Chad Childs, because I think that when we think of slavery, yes, we think of black people. But white people need to start paying attention that it's about white people as well. So, Chad Childs' statement says, "White people must deeply consider the wound of racism on the hearts, minds, and souls of every black American. It is already popular and common to celebrate veterans, as it should be. Black people in our country have also given and sacrificed much. The freedom of black Americans needs to be properly lifted up and celebrated on Juneteenth as a local holiday. We, white Americans, ought to do things about racism, learn about black history, accept accountability for our freedoms that we may not notice, stop talking about how uncomfortable it is to talk about race, stop being afraid of acknowledging white normalcy," and I'll add in "white privilege," "listen to what needs done, spend time with our black neighbors, and hold each other accountable to chains. Recognize Juneteenth." So, I just want to make a point about this survey. That's a pretty high return rate on this survey. I mean, how many employees do we have? Over 3,000, right?
Just under 3,000.
Just under 3,000. So, almost half of our employees returned to this survey and said they wanted to recognize this holiday. So, why put out a survey and not listen to the employees when they say they want it to happen? Tom, back in August, I asked you why we were conducting the survey, and I didn't receive a response. I asked you if our consultant said that it was a good idea. What did our consultant say about?
I might bring Tanya to the podium and answer that, but they had comments and thought it was a good idea. But let me have Tanya come and articulate on that.
Commissioners, I apologize. I'm trying to remember the email. But I would agree with Tom. I think it was, you know, that we are trying to, our initiative is diversity, equity, and inclusion, and this is an opportunity to reinforce that. And Juneteenth would be a good opportunity to put forth that initiative to recognize that holiday.
Do you have anything to add?
I think, that's my memory, too.
Okay. So, I don't want to belabor the point, but I think it's important that this county commission stops talking about things and starts doing things that are action-oriented, that says to every single employee that we value your opinion. We value you as humans. We want to recognize the fact that freedom isn't free. And this community, and this county, and this whole entire nation was built on the backs of slaves. So, it's important that we start recognizing things in a way that is meaningful. And so, with that, I will make a motion that we adopt Juneteenth as a paid holiday in Cedric County.
Thank you. Well, we've already heard what-
Is there a second? I've got a second.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Sorry, I thought that was on. Well, I appreciate everybody coming today. When we had this conversation last November, we did discuss, you know, a lot of the DEI initiatives that we're trying to accomplish. And it was said back then, as well as I'll say it today, I mean, if we're going to take it seriously, we need to take it seriously. And this is a really good first step in doing that. I do think there's discussion, and legitimate discussion, on if it should be a new holiday or if it should be one that we can switch. And we've looked at other communities around us and what they're doing. We are faced with some serious challenges going into next year with a pretty significant deficit that we need to look at. However, we're also trying to prioritize what's going to make us, you know, a better county to work for. We want people to want to work at Cedric County, and I think this is another thing that we can, another tool that we can use to say that we do appreciate our diversity, and we really want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to be inclusive to everybody because I don't think that's necessarily always been the case, and not intentionally so, but I just think that we need to do a better job of being more inclusive and equitable going forward. So, I do support adding this as a holiday. I don't know what, the way this will go, but I've supported this from when we initially had these conversations, and I still do. So, I will second that, and the rest of the discussion is, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. And if we recall, back in February, Commissioner Lopez was the one that brought up discussing June 13, way back in February. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also emailed Mr. Chad back last night after his public comment through online commenting, the Commissioner Cruz just referred to a minute ago, and I asked him some clarifying questions. He replied, "Thank you for your thoughtful reply. Adding another holiday would cost a lot, capitalized, a lot. And while I support my tax dollars, even an increase to them, adding a holiday like as it would be a good return on investment in terms of community trust and inclusion, you would be a better judge of what the county constituents might support." Other words, I think he recognizes this to provide the same level of services we provided in the past with the tax increase. And we already know we have a deficit going into next year. We are deficit spending, using ending balance to balance the books going into next year. So, recognizing that we don't have the funding to do this, if we're going to do this, again, this is a decision we make. Once we do it, it's like popping a balloon. We're not going to undo this next year. Okay, we're going to, once we do it, we're going to do it. Okay? He says, "As a preferred second choice, after adding a holiday, I would opt to replace President's Day with Juneteenth, as I feel both celebrate something about our country." So, he, again, I don't think he had access to the survey, but he essentially said the same thing that our employees said. He says a third option, "Some public and private companies and organizations offer employees a floating holiday." Again, I just mentioned that a few minutes ago. "To use on their selected day of the year, replacing President's Day with a paid holiday to be taken at the employee's decision," I think he means discretion, "might be an acceptable compromise. This allows the county to keep operations open on those holidays, though perhaps with a smaller staff. With this, people may choose to take their county holiday without special approval on days like those during Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, I should say Hanukkah, DiWali, Chinese New Year, Juneteenth, et cetera." And he goes on. "My point is, I think the best option is a floating holiday. If we have to do this today, I think that Chad recognizes the cost, and if we're going to do something today, we're going to move forward, I would advocate for President's Day being a replacement." By the way, there's also some confusion in the community about Columbus Day. Columbus Day is not a paid holiday here at Cedric County. So, our 10 holidays does not include Columbus Day. So, our options are, you know, Christmas Day, I don't think we're going to see a lot of support for that, New Year's Day, not a lot of support for that. You want down, the one that has the most support, if you're going to replace a holiday, would be President's Day, which is a three-day weekend on a Monday in February every year. Going to replace the three-day weekend with a day that, whatever day it falls on, June the 19th, might be a three-day weekend if it falls on a Monday or a Friday. Or if it falls on a Saturday or Sunday, I assume we will recognize that on a Friday or a Monday. So, you might have a three-day weekend, at least in four out of seven days, four out of seven years, on average. But if it falls on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, that will just be a day off in June. Again, June might be more desirable than February. But there's, these are the things we ought to be considering. And in terms of just adding, you know, nearly another million-dollar cost to the county, I don't think is being a good steward of the public's trust in tax dollars. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, a substitute motion, that we would replace President's Day with Juneteenth.
I will second that and explain my second here later on because we had other lights on. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Lindsay, is there any way that you could come up and just kind of explain the impact this will have on our forecast next year? I mean, we're hearing 800,000. I know that's a total cost with lost productivity, but what is the actual fiscal impact of what this would do if we added an additional holiday?
Okay. So Sheena mentioned the actual cost for the work on the holiday. That's over and above what's already built into the budget. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. At least I don't have to duck. So the new cost is 169,000. That is county-wide. So about two-thirds of that would come from county property tax-supported funds. So probably about 115,000, 120,000 in new cost to the financial forecast on the property tax side. Does that address the question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
I appreciate being fiscally conservative. I do appreciate that. But I will say that when we talk about people feeling included and people feeling like they belong in an organization, you can't put a cost on that. I mean, we, the turnover rates of this county are ridiculously high. How many open positions do we have?
I don't have an exact number, but we have several.
We have a lot. So we're going to save a ton of money just by the fact that we don't have our positions filled. So Lindsay, if you could come back up here and talk to me for a second about, you know, in our fund balance, we have to have 20%. That's by law. We have to have that as a reserve.
So the 20% requirement is in our general fund, and it's actually set by county policy, but it is also the basis for our high credit ratings and other things.
So what are we sitting at right now, though, as the reserve?
Probably north of 90 million.
As a percentage?
38.7.
Okay. So we're 18.7% above what we need to keep. Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Well, I did second Commissioner Howell's motion. I am fiscally conservative, and I am not going to add almost a million dollars expense to the county. In addition, I do want to make sure that we recognize June 10th, and this gives us the opportunity to recognize Juneteenth. So that's why I seconded the motion, and we'll vote in favor of it. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Interesting discussion, and I do, I think it's a good substitute to recognize Juneteenth in next year's holiday schedule. But I am intrigued if, I don't know if we could put a, add to the motion, but I would really like to look at a floating holiday, if really, if 11 is, it seems to be a number consistent in the country, and maybe have the least impact on all the departments. If there was one floating holiday that they could choose, you can't answer that originally, but hopefully the software in the payroll to do something like that would be possible. Could you comment on that?
So I most certainly would want to talk to the stakeholders who do that programming to see what it all involves.
Sure.
You know, I can say off the top of my head, I know we've spoke to some departments about a floating holiday. There's concerns about scheduling as well.
Sure.
You know, as operating on a small crew is somewhat difficult.
Well, it could be a good team-building exercise. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
I apologize. I just have one more question. I know one big thing that we've been really trying to fix within the county is morale and the culture of what we offer our staff. And so I just want to know if we add an additional holiday instead of taking one away to recognize Juneteenth. I mean, do you think that's going to have an impact on morale? And what do you think that could, or could that help with keeping our staff here, but then also retaining new staff? I know that's a loaded question. I apologize.
I think it keeps us competitive with other organizations in regards to the number of holidays. And I think the survey speaks for itself that, you know, almost half of our employees answered that they want to recognize the holiday and that they do not want to switch a holiday for Juneteenth. They'd like to just add it.
Okay. And I think that makes a really good point in what, you know, when we talk about our priorities and what we need to do going forward, and how we value our staff, and how do we make sure that we're staying competitive? And if our, in this peer study showing that we are lacking holidays comparative to everybody else, I mean, that's just one more thing that we can have to hopefully get other people to want to work for our county. So I do think that while recognizing Juneteenth is extremely important, this is another additional thing that we can look at, and how do we retain our talent that we have already? So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, that survey, what we ask employees is, do you want an enhancement to your benefit package? Do you want an extra holiday? And there's no downside. Of course, I think many of them do value Juneteenth, no question. Many people that may not value Juneteenth, I would think they would have still said yes, because you're asking them, do you want another day off, paid? Without question, sure, everyone's going to say yes. I think the question was flawed. So let me just say this, there's lots of special days in the calendar year. I think Juneteenth is a wonderful day to celebrate. It depends on your culture, what days you value. Some people would value, I can think of all kinds of things, that people might want to take a day off, to value and celebrate something that's special to them. If it's their culture, or their religion, or all kinds of things. We talk about being inclusive and diverse and respecting people's ideology. The end of the day, I wish the employees had some discretion on which day they take off. One thing I've talked about for years is moving us from a vacation and sick leave policy to a PTO policy, personal time off policy. We could enhance that potentially and give them total discretion on which day they want to take off. We can enhance their vacation schedule, so they can take off whatever day they want to take off. There's lots of ways of solving this. We've been, we've been funneling into this one idea that this is the only way to solve it. Again, I made a motion to support Juneteenth, but I think we don't have the data to really know what our employees really want. And we're going to move forward, because we have to move forward, so we're going to do it. But I think we don't actually have the data to know what other groups are out there that feel like, well, what about my special day? And we're not going to recognize them. And that's not, in a sense, it's not fair to them either. So I am concerned that we're just going to do this because it is, it's popular. And again, I support the idea of taking Juneteenth off. It's a great idea. But I'm also concerned that we're just doing this because it's convenient. We've not done our due diligence to find out all the other options we should be looking at, and really ask employees maybe a more robust set of questions to get more idea from employees what they would rather see us do. If we can't do what they wanted on the front side, enhancing their benefit package, what else can we do? So, Mr. Chairman, I am, I'm ready to vote whenever you're ready to vote. I'm not going to make any more comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
This is neither popular nor convenient. This is an important step in our, the history of our nation. This is a huge monumental thing that is not a popularity contest, nor is it something that this county should do because it's a convenient thing to do. Those comments are blatantly insensitive. Thank you.
Thank you. One other point I don't think was called out too carefully, but granted, 83% voted in favor of recognizing this as a paid holiday. And I don't know any employee that, if I say, "I'm going to pay you, and you don't have to work," wouldn't say yes. But the second part of the question was, 58% of the employees answered "none" if they wanted to substitute one of the other holidays. And that's actually the direction we're moving right now. But I do think it's important to recognize Juneteenth. That's why I seconded a motion by Commissioner Howell. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you all. Thanks to the staff for all the work on this. I appreciate it. Yeah, Commissioner Cruz, Commissioner Lopez first.
Thank you. I just want to thank you guys all for the work. I know this was a ton of work that we've asked you guys to look into over the last year. And while I, you know, it's unfortunate we couldn't just add it, I don't think this conversation is over necessarily. I would love to see a floating holiday and what that could look like, and really going into next year. We have this conversation every single year about our holidays going forward, so I think that this conversation is not necessarily over, but I am happy that we're going to recognize it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
So with that, I'd like to open up the conversation about Indigenous Peoples' Day and replacing Columbus Day with that verbiage. Can we talk about that? That's what I'd like to talk about. We have our partners across the street, well, they're not so across the street anymore, but our city partners have done this. Multiple other governmental organizations have changed Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And so I'd like to open up the conversation about that.
Okay. Open it up.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we replace Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day.
But remember, we don't give Columbus Day off, so I need to know what you want to do about that.
The renaming will be moved from Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay. Well, I think the time to do that is, again, as we start discussing things in February and moving to next November. Commissioner Meitzner.
Point of order. I think that was, that's an off-agenda item, that I think there would need to be a motion to have an off-agenda item.
The discussion is discussion of Sedgwick County 2023 holidays.
Okay. But that's not a holiday.
It is a recognized day off.
It is not a recognized-
Chairman, I think, if I could add in, I think this is an off-agenda item, and it would need to be voted on as an off-agenda item. That item was clearly to recognize the paid holidays for next year. It wasn't to rename holidays or do anything like that. So if the commission wants to go ahead and discuss it, that's fine, but treat it as an off-agenda item.
We'll do it at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item Q, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, Regular Meeting on November 10, 2022.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Britt Rosenkutter, Purchasing Department. The regular meeting of the Boards of Bids and Contracts of November 10, 2022 resulted in three items that we are seeking your approval. The first is the Learning Library for Human Resources. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from Karasov Technology Corporation at the rates listed above for a contract period of two years with two one-year options to renew. The second item is Emergency Communications Remodel for Project Services. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from Icon Structures Incorporated in the amount of $391,450. And the last item is Risk Masters Assured Claims Risk Management. The recommendation is to accept the quote from Computer Sciences Corporation in the estimated amount of $240,930 and establish contract pricing for any additional expenses. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of all items.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. I move that we approve the recommendations of Boards and Bids and Contracts. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seen none. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioner Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items R through double letter AL.
I move to approve Romeo through Alphalima. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seen none. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Thank you. Tanya, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. Nicole is passing out the legislative platform for you to review. You'll see a copy of the red line and then a copy of the clean version. And so what I think I'll do is just go over the edits on the legislative platform, and I'll go through those in order. So under appropriations, the change there, first change that I'll go over is the second item, and that is, we talked about this last time, and that was to add the Wichita biomedical campus. I checked with Andy Schlapp at Wichita State, and so he provided this language. And so it reads, "Fund Wichita biomedical campus, a 471,000-square-foot facility that will house shared spaces for advanced laboratories, clinical research, and technology." So that's been added.
Actually, I don't know that this totally belongs under mental health and behavioral health issues. I think we need to have an issue that says something about, say, heading, "Support KUWSU project." I don't know if that's the right word, but somehow we've got to say we're supporting KU and WSU on this. This is not our issue. It's a support issue for someone else. So I don't think it belongs under the behavioral health issues. It needs its own heading. How do the rest of the Commissioners feel on that? Commissioner Meitzner.
Mr. Chairman, that's a good point, but I also think that these two items are, I've got to get my head around this all the way, but they seem to be our top priorities. So maybe just, if it's, if it is our top priorities, maybe we just indicate, instead of mental health, behavioral issues, just say our two top priorities would be a suggestion.
I agree. These are really our top two legislative priorities.
I think they are. Yeah.
But I don't know how to break it out to show that.
Just maybe retitle that.
But I don't think, I don't think it's just under mental health and behavioral health, because what it's going to turn out are doctors in other areas, it's going to turn out nurses that serve in other areas, it will turn out some social workers that will help with some behavioral health, but they may work in other areas. So I don't know that it truly should be behavioral health.
Okay. Let me work on that and see if I can make some adjustments for that.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I agree with what you're saying. I would say that, again, if this campus was to come to our community, this is a tremendously positive thing for this community, and I would celebrate that creation of this biomedical campus. However, in terms of our platform, what we're really, if you want to narrow our scope of what we're really trying to do here, we need a pipeline of providers to fill the seats in our, in our services. I think there's actually a shortage, similar services, those same services are short even in the private sector. So what I would say, our focus ought to be is that mental health providers, we're very short, and we would like to see the creation of a pipeline to encourage people to go through this type of training and fill the seats that we need to provide the services. I mean, I'd like to be focused on the actual need of Sedgwick County, which is medical, mental health professionals that can provide services to the people that need that, need that help. This might be one way to get there, but this is a very broad statement versus a very narrow statement that says we're interested in that pipeline. And I think separately to this, we should be, type of, a review of the qualifications that allows these folks to provide services to the people that need those services. I think there's, there ought to be a spectrum of qualifications that deals with the spectrum of needs. And right now, I don't think we have that. We don't have that understanding in the Kansas law. So again, I would, to me, I would reword this. The focus is on the issue of creating a pipeline of providers that can provide the services needed to Sedgwick County. I'm not sure I'm saying that very well, but that's my, that's my point. This may be one way to get there, but this is a very broad statement versus a narrow scope, and I think we ought to reword it for that, for that purpose. Thank you, Chairman.
I understand what Commissioner Howell's saying. We're also, we're going to vote on this on November, on December 7th. That's our goal. We need it by that time because of all the other events that are going to take place thereafter. One of the other things that's going to happen on December the 7th is we're going to look at the joint legislative platform between the City of Wichita, Greater Wichita Partnership, Workforce Alliance, REEP, and others. And this is going to be the top issue on that one. So maybe we can tailor ours to meet our need, and at the same time, on the second vote that we'll take on the combined legislative platform, that pretty well says that we do support this facility downtown. Does that work? Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
vote that we'll take on, on the combined legislative platform, that pretty well says that we do support this facility downtown, is that, is that workable, Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Okay, I'll take some time and, and adjust that and get that to you.
Okay, sounds good, all right, continue on.
All right, the, the next change then is on the second page, under aging, I added a line that came from Tim that supports the state agency, and so that line reads, "Support K4AD, which is the State Association, increased funding of $2 million for the nutrition program for serving older Kansans."
The only question I have on this is, is $2 million the exact number we need, or are we just hoping we could get $2 million? I was at a luncheon the other day with a number of legislators, and they say, and one of the comments that they made resonated with me, and what they said was that sometimes you come in asking for something, it's not going to meet your needs, but you're hoping you'll get at least that much. They said, "Tell us what your needs are." I don't know if this is what the needs are, or if this is what we think we can get out of the legislature.
Sure, I'm going to lean on Tim to answer that question.
Good morning Commissioners, Tim Coffin, Deputy County Manager. That is a number that K4A has identified. I can't tell you if they've, they've tied that specifically to a, a, a need or a want. I will tell you that that is a request that is associated with making sure that we're able to continue to fund meal programs at the existing levels. This doesn't necessarily include additional meals, but it is an effort to recognize that costs have increased particularly in, in terms of feeding folks, and so that number was identified by K4A, and again, it's not to add additional meals, it's to just to maintain where we're at.
Okay, the only thing I asked before we adopted, make sure this is what the need is and not something that they hope they can make that, but they need $5 million or something like that. I, I want a number, if this is the number, I'm fine with it, okay? If this is a number that you think you're going to get out of the legislature, maybe I'm not fine with it, okay?
We'll try and get some clarity on that.
All right, thank you. I don't see any other questions on that.
Okay, next item I want to go to is Corrections, and I'm going to ask Rusty to come up here because I'm going to lean on him a little bit. He sent you a letter last night that was a draft that would go to the Kansas Legislature that addresses the first three bullets, which was the, that came out of the recommendations to the task force, and so I'd like to have Rusty and, and you all have that discussion.
Morning Rusty.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager. Do you have questions on this, or?
No, I appreciate that you sent out a letter to all of our legislators, letting them know what the recommendations of the task force are. I think the letter is very clear, and I support moving in that direction.
Okay, so we've drafted the letter for your all's review. If collectively the majority wants to send to legislator, legislators, then I will make that happen. So the question today is, are you okay with the content, and do you want this letter to go forward to provide them with the information specific to the task force recommendations, and what specifically applies to the legislature?
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. When we were working with the task force, we, you know, obviously told them that we were going to do everything we could to push these initiatives forward, and I'm really happy with everything that we've gotten done so far at the county and at the city as too. From the conversations I've had with people at the state, they are really ready to dig in on this as well as soon as they can, so I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I do think, as we're looking at our legislative platform and how long it is, some of these were hard, the stand your ground one was obviously a hard one because there's argument if this is the right space for it, or who does it need to go to, and there could be some conflicting issues on, you know, what the task force has actually recommended versus what's the right path for that. So I almost wonder if it would just be an easier idea to say that we support the task force and what the recommendations are by sending this letter, and then making sure that everybody who needs access to that can have it and have all the recommendations, and then obviously that we're going to be available for them at any point in time if they need our assistance in any way. I don't know what the rest of the commission would feel, but that's what I think might be the best option.
So we have, we have a couple of opportunities, number one, forwarding this letter to all legislators. It's been provided to a number of people, it's been provided to secretaries of departments at the state level, but providing this to each legislator so that they are, so that we know where they're aware, because we know that there's some people who, in spite of the publicity, don't really know much about the incident at JIAAC. I think this shows support for the will of the task force or the recommendations of the task force, because these are legislative issues, the folks in Topeka need to be aware, and somebody needs to champion these causes. These, the two House bills and the Senate bill all died in committee, gained no support last year, and so they would have to be revised or revived this year by someone who would carry them forward in Topeka. And then we have a second opportunity, I'll be talking to Joint Committee on Corrections the day after the Thanksgiving weekend, on the 28th of November, that Monday, I'll do a presentation on the formation, the work of the task force, the recommendations made by the task force, and then what things have been accomplished, what things are in progress, and what things still need to be initiated from those recommendations. So I'll cover that material again on Monday with that select committee of senators and, representatives associated with that committee as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, and Rusty, I, reading this, I, I think it's a very solid letter, and I appreciate the fact that we as a county are taking over the, your reference to the dashboard link, so we are the kind of the gatherer of the update of all the information, and it's a good responsibility, I think, for the county to take on, and, and I'm glad that you make reference to that. In addition, as on my line comments, thank you.
Very good. Looks like we have the corrections that we can move forward with, that portion of the legislative agenda. Tanya, where you at next?
Okay, so just for clarification on that, Commissioners, with that letter, do these three bullets then stay on the, on the legislative platform?
Commissioner Lopez.
I think we can remove those and just make one bullet saying that we support what the recommendations are, and then we could even reference this letters to point to it.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Okay, I think Tim.
I'm sorry, we, we still have to cover Senate Bill 367.
Yeah, there's a couple of things I still need to cover. Tim, I think, wanted to come back up and, and talk on the aging piece.
Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know that that $2 million is a calculated amount based on inflation rates, and so that is the need, that $2 million is the right number.
Very good, thanks for correcting that, or clarifying that, so we'll leave that as it says.
Okay, to jump back in, the fourth bullet then on Corrections, Senate Bill 367, make enhancements to 367. Commissioner Howell and I spoke, and we think this language would help, and that is to add, support the passage of legislation similar to House Bill 2200, and that came out of session 2000, excuse me, 2022.
And Commissioner Howell's had an opportunity to explain this a couple of times, and he and I a couple of years ago actually met with some of the judges and the district attorney on this. It's just not moving forward. We have certain juveniles that commit crimes over and over again, we've got a revolving door, so I think that this is important legislation for us to support. I don't know if you need to add to that?
Yeah, well, thank you Chairman, I, I, you know, the state associations, like the Sheriff's Association, the DA's Association, they've not taken up this as, as a platform issue, you know, in terms of their legislative platform, but I think if we simply had a conversation, I think they might be willing to do that. I, I do think that the South Central Legislative Delegation, this is one of those topics, I know we're going to host them in December, I think this is one of those topics we need to, to raise, talk about briefly, and even more than that, I think that the Commissioners ought to have a community workshop, we should have a workshop amongst Commissioners and invite Ron Pascal, Mark Bennett, Jeff Easter, some of the judges, some people at St. Francis and Corrections in. We've had some great conversations, but it's been closed door, and I think that the public needs to know, why is this on our platform? This is such a big issue, I mean, we have a lot of big issues on our platform. In my personal opinion, this may be one of the very biggest issues on the platform, but it's not getting a lot of, a lot of airtime because people don't know what the problem is, they don't realize there's, there's a problem to be solved, and so we need to be more inclusive to the community and have a bigger conversation with our legislators, with each other, and certainly advocating to the state associations to get on board and help us move this forward. House Bill 2200 is an excellent bill. The last meeting we had, I think it's been more than a year ago, we came up, I think, with the six or seven action items out of that, out of that lunchtime meeting that were excellent, and House Bill 2200 really does reflect all of those. It would be a major, it would be a major enhancement to helping our youth not go to prison. So if you think that's important, that we need to get this, keep this on the platform, and, and really talk about it in a, in a greater way. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And I agree, I think it's need to stay on the platform, we may need to have a workshop though, Manager, if you can work on that. Okay, anything else under correction from anyone? I don't see anything. Hey, Tanya, where you at next?
And then the final change I made was under Fire District 1, this was a grammatical change, and so that is legislation to create an independently elected fire board.
Hey, Commissioner Howell, do you want to say anything about that?
No, I think it's succinct and perfect, thank you.
Well, I'm going to have some issues with it myself at this point in time.
I'm not sure of the right time to talk about it, but I, if we need to vote to keep this on the platform, I think I'd be glad to make that motion, but I, I do think it belongs on the platform, and if we can do this with consensus, that's fine, or I'd be glad to make a motion if necessary. Thank you, Chairman.
Why don't you make the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we would keep, keep a platform issue on the Fire District that states legislation to create an independently elected fire board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I won't support it this time because I'm fearful of some of the actions that have been taken already that could put our Fire District Number 1 into insolvency in the future, and I think we need to fix that before we pass it off to someone else. Commissioner Howell, do you have anything else?
Yeah, yeah, thank you Chairman, so the reason this is on here is because we recognize that throughout the history of the Board of County Commissioners, very few Commissioners have actually lived in the Fire District, meaning that they're paying Fire District taxes and receive services from the Fire District. The principle of taxation without representation is, is in play here. As it sits right now, none of the five Commissioners that sit at this bench today live in the Fire District, yet we pass the budget, we set the salaries, we, we choose how many stations to have and where to place those, we talk about when to buy the equipment, which we, we're talking about bid one in just a few minutes in the Fire District, about buying equipment for the Fire District, we're making those decisions on behalf of people who are paying those taxes, and it doesn't really impact us directly. Sustainability ought to, ought to be the discussion, that the cities that are impacted, the aircraft companies that are impacted, the, the unincorporated parts of the county that are impacted the greatest, they should have a voice and they should be self-determining if they want to raise their taxes and have greater services, or they want to adjust their services in some way and, and do it differently somehow, they ought to have that right to do so. I think for us to be fearful of what they might do, it's hard to hand off authority to someone else that has, you know, give the authority away, but in principle, it belongs to them, and that's why this is on the, this is why I'm asking to put this on the platform. And by the way, the Fire District itself, I've talked to firefighters and others, this I didn't, this idea actually was generated by people in the Fire District, and I brought, I think, I think it makes a lot of sense, and so if you want to create long-term sustainability, we have to have hard discussions, and I think the best people to have that discussion is people who are paying those taxes. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, I don't see any other comments, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
No. Hey, anything else on legislative agenda?
No, that's all I have, Commissioners, on the legislative platform. I think the, what the hope is, is that I can bring this back on December 7th for full adoption, and so I'll make those, those edits and bring that back to you on December 7th. And as you mentioned, Chairman, we'll bring back the joint legislative platform, also for your discussion and approval on December 7th, and that includes the partners of GWP, Chamber, REEP, City of Wichita, and of course Sedgwick County on that joint platform.
Thank you very much for working on it, I know it's a lot of work, I appreciate it. At this time, I'd like to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting for November the 16th, call the order of the Board of Governing Body of Fire District Number 1 for November 16th. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call, Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
We had no one signed up for public agenda today, so, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Regular Fire Meeting Minutes of October 5, 2022.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes of October 5th and October 19th, move to approve. We have a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business, Item C, consideration of the establishment of a steering council for the Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1.
Justin, welcome.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners, Justin Waggoner, Deputy County Counselor. The agenda item that's in front of you today is something you've talked about a handful of times before, it's been brought forward by Commissioner Howell, he's proposed the idea of having an advisory body for Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1 specifically. What's in the backup materials in your agenda is a track changes version of the resolution draft. The changes that are shown are changes from the last time that I presented this to you. They reflect some of the comments, I believe, Commissioner Howell had made during your meeting on October 19th, and I'll go over the high points on that, the substantive changes. If you look on pages, really pages 2 and 3 of that resolution draft, as a reminder, what's, what Commissioner Howell's proposed is a nine-member advisory board. Five of those members would be appointed by cities, really the five largest cities within Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1, so you'd have Goddard, Mays, Park City, Hayesville, and Bel Air, would all be appointing folks who own property or a business that is subject to ad valorem property taxes for Fire District Number 1. So those would be five of the members, the other four members is really where the changes, some of the changes would be proposed from Commissioner Howell's end. Previously, the draft had two members being, two of those four members being recommended by the Sedgwick County Association of Cities, the right, the amendment would be to change that from two to one, member being recommended by SCAC is what they're referred to as, and that member would need to be from one of the other cities within Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1 that's not in the five that I listed before, and so that would provide a measure of representation to a sixth city within the Fire District. The, the position that would be made up would be moving the unincorporated positions, meaning people who, or who own businesses or live within Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1, unincorporate area, changing that number from one members to two, and then also changing the terminology, there previously been language about an at-large member, and it was referred to as a, with a contracting entity, with some language, after consulting with Commissioner Howell and based on some of his comments they made again during the October 19th meeting, that was changed to be an aircraft manufacturing position, in particular, the thought being that there are some aircraft manufacturers who are large payers of taxes within Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1, have a large impact, and give them a seat at the table, and so the language has been changed to clarify that one of those positions would be for an air, would be for a recommended appointee from an aircraft manufacturing company that owns real property in the Fire District, employs not less than 5,000 employees within Sedgwick County. Other, any other changes to the resolution draft are really just minor, not substantive. There's no recommended action from staff at this point, so it's really up to the Board's discretion on where to go with this item today. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Justin today? I guess, I've, I've received two phone calls from the Mayor of Andale and one email from one of the city council members from Andale, and they're kind of concerned about the, the representation on how it falls out. It doesn't look like that they will end up with a member unless someone like the Sedgwick County Association of Cities appoints them, or possibly one of the board, but they also were worried about representation coming from the different stations, districts where stations are located, to make sure that all of our stations are represented, and then another concern was representation based on County Commissioners, and if we take a look at the way it's set up right now, without going into the at-large, District 3 has Goddard, Mays has District 3 and 4, Park City has District 4, Hayesville, District 2, and Bel Air, District 4, so Districts 1 and 5 are not included in that, depending on how that the, the aircraft manufacturing goes, it could go one way or the other. So they were a little bit concerned about how that the representation is set up, so I, I don't know that until we kind of clarify that a little bit, and make sure that all, either all five County Commissioner districts are somehow included, or that all of the stations have someone that's representing them, because right now we don't have all of the stations, so that affects the firefighters. So those are the comments that I, I have received from the public, and I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what the public was worried about.
And Chairman, if I could, and I can't speak very well to the Fire District or the station locations, I think there's, there are fire staff here could maybe address that more specifically, but I would say Bel Air's in District 1, so I believe District 1 is where.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking at.
We've had numerous discussions across this bench in the public. Sedgwick County Association of Cities has met twice on this very topic. Chief Doug Williams presented as well at last Saturday's meeting. SCAC had some concerns initially. They weren't sure about some clarity in the language, they weren't sure about the representation. We made adjustments, brought those back to the B OCC. There was other concerns here articulated by Commissioners. We took it back and did some more revisions. I'll just say this, there's no perfect, there's no perfect solution to this. I understand the concerns you just articulated a moment ago, and I would ask, first of all, this is the first I've heard about those concerns. People from Andale didn't, I mean, I've been involved in this from the very beginning, so I wish they would have contacted me as well. I know that you're their Commissioner, but I guess I would like to know that they had some concerns. But nevertheless, the Sedgwick County Association of Cities did meet, and Andale is a member of SCAC, and they did make a motion to adopt, they made a motion Saturday to recommend that the B OCC does adopt this in its current form. That was passed unanimously by SCAC. I'll just say this, this is not in stone. We can make changes if we feel like we need to. We need to get started. Again, right now, the Fire District, who's paying $23 million this year to the county, doesn't have a voice, other than through the B OCC, in a kind of informal fashion. And I don't know about my colleagues here, but I don't have a lot of conversations about Fire District with people in my district. I wish I did, but I think this makes it more purposeful, more formal, and I think that they can have a greater voice if we do it this way. We talk about things like cab boards and things, other boards that we've created over the years to make sure that there's a, you know, people who are interested in those topics have a formal voice. I don't know why this is different. This is a large part of what Sedgwick County provides to our community. And right now, this board, I think, needs to, arguably for many reasons, needs to have a formal voice, and I think we need to get started. The reason I stuck with 9, again, KSA 193612A, talks about the establishment of a district Board of Trustees. And there are some places in this state where they do not have an elected fire board, or they do not use the Board of County Commissioners to make all of the decisions, they actually use a Board of Trustees. Unless we want to change Kansas law, as is currently stated, there's a limit of nine. You can go down to three, but you can't go higher than nine if you wanted to establish a Board of Trustees. And I can envision, in effort this year, we're going to move forward trying to get an elected fire board approved by the state legislature. But should we fail this year, or maybe next year, or however long it takes, if we don't get it done at the State House, we have the option as a Board of County Commissioners, sitting as the governing body of Fire District Number 1, to establish a Board of Trustees, and the maximum number is nine. And again, I think we've been very thoughtful on how to create a nine-member board. Is it perfect? Possibly no. But if you add members to this board down the road, it's going to be very difficult to reduce the size of this board. You may have to trash the whole thing and start completely over again. So I think there's a lot of reasons for us to move forward today. We've taken three or four months, maybe longer, talking about this, and if anybody has concerns, they can certainly bring those forward. We can even amend this in the future if we need to. But it's time for us to move forward. Thank you, Chairman. I would make a motion that we follow the SCAC's recommendation, and we would adopt the resolution that establishes a steering council for Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1 as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't object to any kind of advisory council whatsoever. I wanted to point out some concerns that were coming out of my district. So I'll second the motion. Seeing no discussion, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item D, discussion of Fire District 2023 holidays.
Welcome back, Sheena. We'll have to get you a seat closer over here. Make sure you duck.
Thank you for the warning. Again, Sheena Schmutz, Chief Human Resources Officer, just presenting the 2023 holidays as we have previously discussed. Since we did have a vote in the previous meeting, I would recommend that we move forward with the same holidays.
I move that we take the exact same action we took for the rest of the staff and substitute Presidents' Day for Juneteenth. We have a second motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item E, report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on November 10th, 2022.
Good morning.
Good morning again. Britt Rosenketter, Purchasing Department. The regular meeting of the Boards of Bids and Contracts for Sedgwick County Fire District 1 of November 10th, 2022 resulted in three items that we are seeking your approval. The first is a current model four-wheel-drive, three-quarter-ton crew cab battalion truck. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Rustiak Ford Incorporated in the amount of The second item is a current model four-wheel-drive, dual rear-wheel, standard cab brush truck. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Rustiak Ford Incorporated in the amount of And the final item is a current model four-wheel-drive, dual rear-wheel, crew cab fire squad truck. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Rustiak Ford Incorporated in the amount of I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of all items.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. I move that we approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent, item F, under the fire agenda.
Thank you. Move to approve item Foxtrot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent, item F, under the fire agenda.
Thank you. Move to approve item Foxtrot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.